I would like to call to order the December 17, 2019 West Palm Beach Planning Board. May I have a question?
If you please call a roll.
Steven.
Present.
Todd McLeod. Let the record reflect that Todd McLeod is not present.
Oh, let the record reflect that Todd McLeod just stepped in.
Let the record reflect that.
That happy hour has ended and he's agreed to join us.
Peter Piffco.
Yeah, he was demonstrating across the street.
For both sides, here, ever the politician.
Debra Rang.
Here.
Andres Perdello.
Here.
Mark Pateman.
Here.
Christopher Chase.
Here.
Scott Holtz. Let the record reflect that Scott Holtz is not present.
All right, the next order of business is approval of the November 19, 2019 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? If I either have amendments or a motion for approval.
A move for approval.
Motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those who are favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda is a report of the planning staff. Ms. Van.
Evening. Planning members, well members, Angela Van, planning his own administrator. To give you an update of cases that's been approved since your November planning board meeting. These cases were approved on December the 2nd. You had majority of it five to zero, and you had also a five to zero in denial. And that denial was 3907 South Flagler Drive. You actually heard this in June of 2019. It went, it was a little odd when it went to the City Commission on August the 12th, and it was unanimously approved, and they were supposed to go back and meet with the applicant, with the neighborhood and work with them. And then on October 7, 2019, the applicant was here to do the case, and no action was taken. There was a motion that was denied for lack of a second motion, and nobody came back and made an alternate motion in a denial or approval. The way our code written is you have to have a motion whether it's denial or approval or the case is actually approved.
Ah.
So, they went back to City Commission again on December the 6, 2019, and at that meeting, the actual commission denied the request by five to zero vote.
How much parking did they want additional? Was there a lot of parking to be added?
It wasn't a parking, it just, the commission said that they didn't think, and that's the building they're proposing was compatible with the area and the residence.
This one, yes, right.
Yes, this is the one on, just to the north of Southern.
So, is the whole project denied or just that variance?
Whole project denied. Denied it.
Let's sue.
We voted for it and we-
Can we sue the commission?
Staff voted for it and the commission denied it.
They did support us originally.
Yeah, the commission denied it.
And the medication wore off and changed.
We'll see, we, we've heard they may appeal in the courts, but we'll see what happens.
All right.
Really?
Next one was 4700 North Congress Avenue, this is a request, you heard, it was for rezoning and land use of an office, existing office building that's community service. The applicant was coming in to change it to office commercial to open up and allow more uses in the area. You heard that case at the October 15 meeting. Next was a racetrack at 2495 45th Street. It was coming in as a tear down and a redo of the whole area, and it was just tear down and increase the size and allow outdoor seating. Highlight it in the streets. Next is commission meeting just, yes, last night, on December 16, 2009. All these were approved by five zero vote. You heard this case, this is an initiated request to the downtown master plan area to do TDR sending and receiving sites and to clarify, update eligible sending and receiving sites to affect with the historic part of it. You heard this at the November, your November 19 meeting. Next one was City Place Commercial Plan Development Amendment was to change the name to Rosemary Square, establish a new sub area, and that sub area was for regulations for the existing Publix block, add a bakery use and add the plaza area to the Harriet Hemble sub area, and this was approved by the commission with five zero vote, and you approved it also at the November 19 meeting. Resilient Academy was the next one. This was for a major amendment to use artificial turf for soccer fields, where our code requires that you do a major amendment to use artificial turf and waiver of the sports field fence height. And again, you guys approved this on the November 19 planning board meeting. And the last was Prime Development. This is out on the northwest corner of Military Trail and 45th Street. You saw annexation of this property, and then probably about six months ago, and now they're coming in and giving it all the properties, general commercial and commercial zoning and land use, and they'll be back in for a commercial plan development when they're ready to redevelop the site. And you heard this at the October planning board meeting. Includes staff's presentation, just the one request on application, gender, planning board case number 1420J. The applicant is requesting another continuation to the January 21st, 2020 planning board meeting.
And we'll take that up. Thank you.
So moved, do you want a motion?
We'll skip to that first. Any questions first of staff? And if not, thank you. Next on the agenda is a report, excuse me, remarks of the chairperson, of which I have none. Next is the declaration of ex parte communications. Does anyone have anything to report or to declare?
Nope. I received a call from Kevin Shapiro, a neighbor, a neighboring property owner on planning board case number 8480, but I did not get in touch with Kevin.
Okay. Anyone else have anything to disclose? We now move to the public hearing portion of our meeting and the swearing in of the speakers. For everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening, please stand up and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to given this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. The first case, as Ms. Van referenced, is 1420J. The applicant had requested it be continued to this date, they now request it be continued until our January 21st meeting. Does anyone have any objection to this? And if not, I'd ask for a motion.
So moved.
Motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those who are favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. We will then move on to planning board case number 8480. And I understand we'll hear from the applicant first? Please proceed.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Rachel Needle, and I'm a licensed psychologist. I was born and raised in West Palm Beach and attended Suncos Community High School. For more than 25 years, my father has been on the board of CARP, which unfortunately for our community closed, and he was the president for about four of those years. I care about our community and helping those struggling with substance use disorder very much. I've been working with substance use disorder treatment centers around the country for the past 12 years, and I am proud to have been appointed by and on the state attorney's sober home task force for the past three years. Helping people struggling with substance use disorders has been a passion of mine for a long time, and has been, as has, been working with facilities to ensure they are doing things ethically, legally, and clinically soundly. I'm well respected in this field, and we'll make sure that if we are passed, this is one of the most well-run and reputable medical detoxes in the country. There are two issues I'd like to address here this evening. One, how a medical detox is classified, or the lack of appropriate classification. And two, the stigma surrounding mental illness, especially substance use disorder. First, I would never introduce a dangerous element into my city or that area. Both of my parents and my brother's offices are literally right there. One is in the same parking lot, and the other is directly across the street. If I felt this was not compatible and consistent with the city's land development regulations, I would not have submitted the petition. There's no accurate classification for a medical detox, and it does not compare to a group home or ALF. A medical detox is a medical center with overnight stays within an average of three days in length of time. Within a detox program, while there is medical oversight from a physician on call, there are no actual medical services provided on site, but for the dispensing of prescribed medications from an onsite pharmacy, or as needed basis to assist the client through their individualized program. There are no otherwise invasive procedures or other medical type care. Conversely, with an ALF, while there are no specific medical services provided, there is the occasion where chemical restraint may be required, and limited nursing services are routinely provided. More intensive 24-hour nursing services of a medical nature may be provided as an ALF, as well as under a doctor's care. Two, there's a stigma that exists with regard to mental illness, especially substance use disorder. This stigma fuels fear. The truth is, there are homeless people and people addicted to substances in that area already, so much so that local businesses have hired private security. This medical detox will be staffed, and everyone will be inside the building. This is not a treatment center. It is so very different than what you are imagining a treatment center for substance use is. It's strictly a medical detox. It's important to me to give back to the community, so we plan to do education in the area to help reduce the stigma and increase understanding of individuals who struggle with substance use disorder. Substance use disorder is also protected by Title II of the American Disabilities Act, which provides a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. It's illegal under the ADA and its implementing regulations to exclude treatment centers from zoning districts where other similar quasi-residential or medical uses are allowed, or to apply different standards for their approval. The city zoning prefers that all drug and alcohol treatment providers be within the 45th Street medical corridor. Those uses are permitted as of right. The reason we need special approval unlike any other provider is only because the office complex was developed as a commercially, a commercial plan development. When that was approved in 1999, addiction medicine did not exist as it does today. Therefore, and therefore, no one could have reasonably contemplated the uses otherwise allowed. Similarly, there are other medical detox facilities within West Palm Beach for which there has not been, to my knowledge, for medical detox specifically, any negative impact on the neighborhood, the community, or the city as a whole. Thus, I do not know why my request would be denied except out of fear and inaccurate information surrounding mental illness, specifically substance use disorder. I'm here because I believe strongly that our medical detox will do good for our community, and that it complies with, complies with the zoning standards in the area. More important, I believe that those who need help the most should not be discriminated against, and vote, or voted against simply because we don't want addicts around our businesses. That mentality must end. It's based upon a stereotype that has hurt our society much more than it has ever protected us from harm. I hope that tonight at this meeting, our view of mental illness shifts. Everyone in this room has or will be impacted by, in some way, by mental illness and likely a co-occurring disorder like substance use disorder. I want to be one of the providers that is held out as the example for all that is good in this space. For those not initially inclined to vote for me, I ask that you please keep an open mind and let me prove you wrong. For those who support me and continue to do so, even when I want to give up because everyone seems to be against the type of people that I help, I thank and love you. I have reviewed the standards for amendments for code compliance, and my request seems to comply with those standards. It does comply with those standards, I'm sorry. I do have a map of the area with the different facilities that are around it, which include outpatient surgical centers, medical centers. Across, directly across the street is a women's health facility that provides abortion services, so it's an outpatient surgical center. There's a hotel in the area, which is overnight stays, so I hope that you'll, you'll take a look at this as well. Thank you so much for your time and for your consideration.
May I pass this out?
Thank you, yes. All right. Anything else you'd like to add at this point?
Me?
Yes.
No, thank you.
Okay. Can we hear from staff?
I'm Board Chair Angela Van, planning his own administrator. Ms. Whooton is actually on vacation this week, so I'm going to take her spot to present this case. As always has been said, this is located in a commercial plan development. It's called Village, I think it's 45th Street Business and Industrial Park, which is parcel B, which is shown here, is located basically on the northwest corner of Village Boulevard and 45th Street. Subject property is about one acre and has a commercial land use and commercial zoning. Current uses are commercial businesses, medical offices, I think there's a daycare center in there in this area. And the surrounding uses is, she stated in North Point, you do have a lot of, you have ACLF in North Point, you have clinics in North Point, which is basically located immediately to the east of it off of Village Boulevard. The site in question, particular site, the applicant wants to do the facility, and it's located, shown in red on the property. It's located in, basically, on the north side of the CPD, back behind existing building, this little plaza, so it's located just north of that plaza that actually fronts Village and 45th Street. Basically, over the years, the series of amendments to this CPD to include not only industrial type uses, but also business and medical office and commercial uses. We did that about 30 years ago. The park is divided into two parcels, parcel A and parcel B. Parcel B has been fully developed. Parcel A is divided into two parcels, and one is known as the FPNL parcel, and then the other is Barnac Bank parcel. And the subject of this application is the 5205 Village Boulevard, which is also located within parcel B of the development. In 86, the commission passed a major amendment to limit the uses permitted in parcel B of the CPD to those uses permitted in general commercial. But those uses permitted by right in general commercial, I think that's a point, point to note, is those uses are permitted by right. Our code implemented use table has permitted by right, permitted with extra requirements, and permitted with a special use permit. So they amended it to only those uses permitted by right. The applicant's opposing, as she stated, a major amendment to add group home type five as permitted use in parcel B of the CPD, and is for proposed medical certification center. And currently, as I just stated, the uses on 45th Street Business and Industrial Park governed by the zoning code 94273, and utilized underlying general commercial zoning district. In our code today, a group home type five, which is today, home for individuals classified as former substance abusers and participants in inmate release program are unpermitted with a class B in general commercial and community service in the entire city. So we allow those facilities with a class B in general commercial and within community service. And because the property is a planned development, the code today, and is governed by its own development order, the applicant is requesting that the development order be amended to include this use permitted by right. If the use was in the code today and it was permitted by right, we wouldn't be here. Because they basically go through the process and actually go in by right, but because the use has a class B special use permit on it, it can't go in, so they have to do a major amendment in order to do that. Just to give you a quick view, even though these standards do not apply to them, just, they meet all the requirements. If it was a class B special use permit, they would meet all the requirements, additional standards, except the distance requirement. And again, that's a distance separation from the, it's a rehabilitation center of the Palm Beaches, which is located at 301 North Point Parkway, and that's inside of North Point CPD, which again, that use went in by right, because their development order allowed for any type of group home to actually go in by right. Staff finds that it complies with amendment standards, complies with additional standards, and with the exception, again, we say of the distance separation. And recommend approval of planning board case 848480 with the following conditions. And that's prior to interest of the occupational license or business tax. They have to make sure they have the proper approvals from the county, state, and federal agencies. And in event that a group home consists of bona fide dwelling units, then they basically have to be licensed and regulated according to the zoning code and the zoning district as far as density is concerned. And that concludes staff presentation. We have any questions you may have?
Any questions of staff? Let me start on this side. Any questions? Chris? Debra? Todd?
They had to go through the special use permit process. Would they be able to get a waiver to the 1,200-foot requirement?
Yes.
Potentially, through the ZBA. Potentially, they could through the-
Potentially to go to the zoning board of, if they were not in a PD, they go to the zoning board of appeals, and they can ask for a waiver for the distance separation. Yes.
Peter? Any questions?
Okay, but should we not make it a waiver here also?
No, because you basically put in the use, once you put the use in the PD-
Then the distance gets-
Yeah, it's allowed. You're technically waiving it, but it's allowed.
Okay. Andrea, any questions?
There's no site plan changes, it's just-
No.
That's it. That's all, yeah.
And the parcel B, the use is only applying to parcel B of the CPD?
It applies to the whole, yeah, parcel B.
Entire CPD.
Parcel B, yes.
Which is just the interior red line around the lot?
No, yes, the red line that I showed.
Entire red line around the entire CPD.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's an important distinction.
Yeah, it's the entire thing. And one point to note that we can also, staff is in the midst of rewriting our group home requirements to better align ourselves with the ADA requirements, and you should see that sometime in early spring coming before you, because if that was in, and applicant did not want to wait, so that's why we're here before you today to amend the regulations.
All right, any other questions of staff? Thank you. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this? Please step forward, sir. Have you completed a card?
I'm sorry?
Have you completed a card? I see there's in your hand. If you could give that to the clerk or to her, that's fine. Please state your name.
My name is Stephen Shapiro. I'm one of the partners of 45th Street Partnership. We are a neighbor to the subject property. We own three buildings on the adjacent parcels. Just so you know, being here tonight and speaking is very difficult for me. The Needle family that owns that property are friends for almost 40 years. Rachel, who's going to be one of the principals, is one of my daughter's closest friends for most of her life and part of our family since she was in kindergarten. She knows that I love her dearly, and that there's very little on this planet that I wouldn't do for her unless it had a true adverse effect on my business or my family. Unfortunately, that's the case here tonight. Though we've been told that the actual plan is to house a detox center for drug abusers who are trying to get off of drugs, in adding a group home type five to the permitted uses, the amendment would allow a home for individuals classified as former substance abusers and participants in inmate release programs to be situated directly across the street from a kinder care with a playground and children at play. It's also adjacent to our office buildings, which house offices for small business, small businesses, nonprofits, and other professions. We clearly recognize that there is a great need for this type of facility in our county, and that the use is one of those NIMBY, not in my backyard, kind of uses that no business or individual wants in their neighborhood. The reasons to demonize a facility like this may be real or not, but it's certainly the perception of most that only bad things can result from having a facility like this placed amidst professional businesses, a childcare center, a school, and a church with kids' camps. We know from past experience that it will be, will displease and frighten current tenants and dissuade future tenants from wanting to locate here. This is more than the legal issue of is it approved in the zoning or not, it's a very bad idea. The use is just not compatible with what exists today. In the big picture, having this type of facility is one of the first buildings that people see when entering one of Palm Beach County's most important business parks, does nothing but discourage tenancies, lower values. Real danger may or may not exist, may simply be perception, but it's the reality to those who must live and work nearby. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Would anyone else for the public wish to be heard? Please come forward, sir.
Well, thank you. Is that the guy who just said a Christmas? Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Larry Palumbo with Southampton Companies. We're another neighbor, two doors down from this proposed property. I share Shapiro-Pertnoy's perception of this. We also have the kinder care in between us and our personal building. We have been residents, business residents there for the better part of 14 years, and in the city for the better part of 28 years at this point. And although I do share the concept that these are needs of the community, I'm not convinced that it's a good neighbor and is a positive and proper fit across from the kinder care with our clients coming in and out of that area. The building happens to sit at the entrance to Village Boulevard on that north side, so anybody coming into any of our businesses is coming past that. And I realize the intent is, the representation is, that it's contained interior, but anyone that's familiar with addiction rehab, in this case, even a little bit more severe, understands that there's a lot of time spent outside congregating, smoking cigarettes. It's, it's, it's true, it's real, it exists. There's also the perception of, of mental health sickness, you know, again, it's, it's not something that we take lightly, but some of the people that are going to be in this detox center will be either court ordered or elective, but most coming in are coming in in a bad situation, trying to make it better, and we're introducing them to our business neighborhood and our clients. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have the two cards. Does anyone else wish to be heard on this issue? Please come forward, sir, or ma'am. Whoever gets the podium first. I just need to be sure you fill out a card and give it to the, but you could go ahead and speak first. Please state your name first, and then-
Okay. Good evening. My name is Jai Roberts. I'm the center director at kinder care, and I'm on, I'm here on behalf of kinder care education. As an advocate for children, I feel that the safety of our children is priority. We serve over 100 children and families. While a detox facility serves a great purpose, we do not feel that it's appropriate or necessary to place it adjacent to our preschool. Our playgrounds are visible to the incoming, like incoming facility, and we do not want our children exposed or seeing individuals that may have, like, inappropriate conduct. We have concerns with potential hazardous materials that could surface in areas surrounding our center, and existing families would feel unsettled knowing our center is near a facility like this. My families would feel concerned and probably leave in order to protect their children. This would be disruptive to the family and the, and the children, and the children in our business, and families would hesitate to choose us based on a location that it would impact our enrollment. So, that was it.
Thank you. And be sure to give one of these people your card. Thank you. And sir, did you want to come forward and speak?
Yep.
Please. Please state your name, and we may proceed.
Good evening. My name is Jean Emmanuel Philogin. I am the senior pastor at Philadelphia Church of the Newborn, which is located next to the daycare. I just stand here tonight to say a few words regarding the detox center due to the fact that we feel that our, you know, congregation, which has a lot of kids, you know, are also, I mean, is also exposed to the same risks. We do understand that people who are addicted do need help. It is not something that we can deny, because they are human beings like us. But at the same time, I believe that it is mandatory that we think about the welfare of our kids. And having, you know, the daycare, which is open five days a week, and the church that is located next to it, where we have children seven days a week, present a really great risk. And this is the reason why, so I'm standing here tonight to see that I don't think it is a good idea due to the fact that our children will be really exposed to, you know, the detox center. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Would anyone else wish to be heard on this matter? If you could give the card to the clerk. And we oftentimes, sir, do you want to come forward? Be sure to complete one of the cards when you're done, but you go ahead and speak now.
I just actually had a question for staff. If the motion is voted down and they have to go to the zoning board of appeals, does the residential neighbors that are to the south of 45th Street get notified in that?
I'll let the staff respond to your question.
Regardless of whether the application is approved or denied, the ultimate decision is the City Commission, doesn't go to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
And if they, if they-
Our board only makes a recommendation.
If they did not, if they did not get notified- And if they did not, if they did not get notified originally, they will not get notified. I don't know if they were within the 500 feet requirement. I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, that was just, that was just a question.
Okay, fair enough. And be sure, sir, if you could please do a card for we have it for our record. Does anyone else who has not spoken who wishes to speak, please identify yourself. If not, we'll bring him back to... Well, hold it. I will give... Miss, do you want to come forward?
Yeah, I didn't.
You have to, okay. You need to come forward to the podium and you can complete a card afterwards. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Rebecca Kwaku. I attend that church. I'm also a registered nurse. I've been working about two, three years. And where I work, I've also worked at a detox center and I know the type of people that are there. I'm not saying that they're bad people, but they are people who have both mental issues and they have struggles that they're trying to deal with. And a detox center or a rehab, a drug rehab, is a place of healing for them, which is a great thing. But in this case, because I know my church has a lot of low-income, at-risk youth, it would be damaging, in this case, to have the drug rehab near them because it can cause some types of triggers that we would like to prevent from happening. Besides that, I also feel like there are times that these people here in the drug rehab, even while they are there sometimes court ordered or involuntarily, they do have the basic right of leaving if they want to. And usually when they leave, they can leave at any point of the time or day and they can just go out in their surrounding areas and they do sometimes questionable things. And that can also be seen by these at-risk youth as well. Sometimes they're using drugs. Sometimes they're using needles. They can leave them in areas that are, you know, neighboring around us. Sometimes they can do certain things. For instance, I don't want to say this, but prostitution sometimes occurs with those who have mental health and drug issues. And for that to be very close to these neighboring businesses as well as the daycare and the church, I feel that's very concerning. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Be sure to complete the card. Anyone else wish to be heard first from the public? Yes, we're going to invite you back, but let's first see if there's anyone else for the public wish to be heard. And if not, yes, you may come forward. If there's anything you'd like to add before we bring them back to the board, you may do so.
So again, I appreciate all of these concerns. And again, you know, they fuel from fear and miseducation. Again, this is a medical facility. This is not a sober home. This is not a treatment facility. Again, average day of three days, of which time people are usually just very sick sitting in their room. Will we have an outside back where you cannot see, back area in case people need air? Absolutely. You will not be able... There is a wall that exists. We already own the building. You won't be able to see people from the street. You won't be able to see people at all unless you're inside our facility or walking out back. The other thing, and I appreciate it, I don't know what detox you work at. I've worked in treatment for, like I said, over twelve years now. And when people leave, so do people decide they're adults, they can leave? Typically, it's not in the stage of medical detox that they leave. It's when they're in treatment that they leave. But let's say somebody did decide to leave. They don't just walk out of our front doors. It is, first of all, it's medically dangerous. They could die, right? If they just stop using and just walk out of our front door. We bring them to a hospital. So if that were to ever happen, I've worked in a detox for, different detoxes in the area for over ten years. I've never seen somebody walk out the front door and start to use, never seen needles outside. It's actually one of the safest processes in the getting sober, you know, continuum, I would say. So that's not, that's not accurate, you know, and unfortunately, based on misinformation. The sign would not actually be on the street. The way it's situated, if you look at the two buildings, they actually face each other. We own both buildings. One is a real estate and a couple, like an attorney works out of there and the other, which is ours, 5205, faces it and the sign, which we will make very small, I've already promised the owners around if this happens, you know, it's not, that's not how we're going to get people into our facility, but they're seeing a sign on the side of the road, you know, will face the other building. You cannot see it from the road at all. So again, this area already has a ton of homeless and people that have substance use disorder problems. We're not people bringing these people to the area. We're people that are helping people that specifically come for our needs, for our services, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything you would like to add, Angela? If not, we'll bring them to the board.
Just one thing staff would like to add is, we have to, I've heard the comments here today, and you have to remember, even as she stated that under Fair Housing Act and ADA, that recovering addicts are protected class. So that's why staff did not dwell on a detox actual group home, as far as we're concerned, and they can't dwell on that fact. So I just, I'll just leave this up here. You can read it for yourself in terms of what's stated in the federal law about this type of use. But again, staff did it based on the fact that it is any type of group home, because we have to treat them the same as we would treat a group home facility that's located within 1,200 feet of there for elderly or children or anything. We have to treat them as the same.
Understood. Thank you. All right. Let me start on this side and I'd just like to hear from everyone as I go down. Your thoughts, initial thoughts? I have my thoughts I'll share to the end. Please begin.
So Mr. Chairman, I find that the applicant is really sincere and I'm sure she would be an excellent operator of this facility, but we're being asked to approve this use change for the entire CPD. And we can't control what happens subsequent to her excellent operation. There is a large demand for these types of group home facilities. There's going to be plenty of opportunity for anybody to pay a lot of money or add more and more of these facilities to make this kind of a center. They're in high demand. There's not a lot of real estate available for them, so if there's an opportunity, there's going to be more of these and they may or may not be as well-run as the applicant proposes. So the fact that the, you know, the existing uses around this facility are not compatible is more compelling to me than the applicant's argument here. You know, they're asking for a use change for the entire CPD and, you know, I'm in this business. I understand that the perceptions are the problem, but they will be the reality of the decreased values of the adjacent properties and the limited ability for those existing uses and existing building owners to extract value from their real estate. So while I'm sympathetic, I can't support this use change.
Thank you. Andre?
It was a tough...
We can come back to if you want to give us some more thought.
No, I, you know, part of me really wants to support this, but Mark raises a good, a good argument to not support it. I think that he's right. I mean, if this, I think she is also very sincere and I trust that it will be a very well-run facility and operation. But, you know, if it's not the reality, you know, who really knows? You're looking into a crystal ball and looking at the brighter side of it, but there's a lot of question. I'm mixed, but I think that I'm still thinking about it, but...
Peter, your thoughts?
You know, we have to debate what's in front of us. And we have to look at this from a planning perspective. I think that the general public perhaps has a slightly different attitude and approach to what this use is. I mean, hearing from the applicant, I don't agree with what the general public thinks this facility will be. To me, it's being depicted as something totally inboard, inbound, well-controlled. And for that area and the issues that are raised here from a purposes of planning act, I have to support the application.
Todd?
This is kind of unexpectedly difficult case, but I'm a bit torn as well. I think we've heard testimony from all of the immediately adjacent neighbors that they have concerns about this. From a purely land use standpoint, I'm not sure it makes a great amount of sense, but I don't think we'd be having this conversation if this was a senior living facility or some other sort of living facility besides a detox facility going there. In that regard, we would be treating them differently because of the people that would be using the facility. So I find it hard to oppose the application on those grounds.
Thank you. Deborah?
Yeah, with me, it's about six in one hand, half a dozen in the other. The proposed oversight is very good, but the, you talk about the public's perception and it's not that they're miseducated. It's from experience. And I've had that experience, you know, where we've had to push to have one of the centers shut down. However, the need is great. And the people who need the services, those numbers are climbing. It's just, it's pretty hard and I think you did an excellent presentation. However, listening to the young lady from kinder care and the church members, I understand your concern and I feel your concern. It's just difficult.
Understand. Chris, your thoughts?
Yeah, I share, I share my colleague's sympathy with all the people that are affected by this. And I guess, it sounds, I guess, looking at the statute, it appears that the city, their path is really proscribed, right? So that the city just has a law that they follow and that's it. And I guess our mandate's a little bit different because we're, we represent the community and so...
I wouldn't say that. I'll get some guidance from our council.
Maybe that's a question. Could I, could I understand what the difference is between our perspective and the city's perspective?
And the federal law that's been cited to us.
Well, yes, sir. I think the operative fact as far as this board is concerned is that the city has allowed this use as a class five facility. So it's allowed. That is not before you as to whether this type use should be allowed. What is before you is the fact that a planned development has been approved and the planned development is governed by the development order, which contains its rules and its regulations, and it governs how that planned development operates. The applicant has requested an amendment to the planned development to include an additional use in that development, which was not included at the time it was approved. Your decision in terms of deciding if that amendment should be approved is based on finding that it meets the standards that's presented to you in your backup material. So that whether you support it or oppose it, you have to find justification for that action based on it meeting or not meeting these standards. What may happen as a result of this type use is really speculative. Your question is whether what's before you meets the requirements of an amendment to a planned development and that's decided by the standards presented to you.
Did that help answer your question?
So we're in the same position the city's in. Is that correct?
Yes, you are making a recommendation to the commission as to whether it should approve this.
Any other thoughts you have now? I have Chris first to finish up.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna think about what I just learned.
I would like to add something if I might at this point because I intend to support this application. And let me explain why. To begin with, most of the evidence we heard here today against it, while heartfelt, was all based on perception. Perception. That's the very thing that we are trying to deal with here, is a perception, not the reality. And I speak of experience. I have lived in the same home for thirty years. My office is three blocks from my home. In between my home and office is one of these facilities. There's another facility also in this same small neighborhood. We have other group homes as well. So thirty years I have lived and worked side by side, one of these facilities. My child was born in that home, old good Sam next door, and he grew up there. So I'm talking about where I have lived and where I have worked and where I've raised my family. And I want to give some assurances to those who have, I think, heartfelt concerns that I think you may be pleasantly surprised. That certainly has been our experience. If it's a one-well-run facility, you have nothing to fear. The real problem we have here, and I agree, we have perceptions that could affect customers, that could affect market values. But we can't let, I would argue, misperceptions drive our policy here today. We could have used that excuse throughout our history and done a lot of bad things, right? We have to overcome these misperceptions. We have to, the arc has to be a positive one for education and understanding. There is a real need in this city. There's a real need in that community for these services. And this is not a NIMBY situation. This is in my backyard for thirty years. So I intend to support this application and I have not heard one bit of evidence contrary to it that wasn't based on perception and nothing more. I agree that perception's out there. We have a shared obligation to overcome it. Those are my thoughts.
Any other discussion?
I guess I'd like to add something. That was such a thoughtful statement and really helpful for me to, you know, to think about, you know, what the right thing to do is. And it made me think about something that happens in my neighborhood, which is also a downtown neighborhood, which is where, you know, we're surrounded by people who aren't receiving this treatment and that's pretty terrible. I mean, there's homeless people all around where I live.
That is a greater concern, I would argue, than people not receiving the treatment.
And so it's like, okay, so we're all faced with this in every neighborhood in this city. We're all living with people who aren't receiving this kind of treatment and maybe it's for all of our benefit that, you know, there are places where people can receive this treatment and maybe that helps me make up my mind a little bit.
Another perspective to look at it too is that there's, there's a lot of people watching this. It's not like this is, you know, there's a lot of people who are going to be making sure that this place is running well and if it's, if it doesn't, that'll, that'll be the end of it.
If you look at this map, if not this neighborhood, where are you going to put it?
Exactly.
Mine is a residential neighborhood and we have them there.
We have them in my neighborhood as well and they're all over the place, really.
Has it been a special issue in your neighborhood?
Yeah, but you live in one of them, no?
He speaks from experience on inside the facility, but we're...
No, but to be honest, man, they're everywhere.
And those who live near one, has it been a particular issue?
No, honestly. I mean, you see, you do, I think this operation that the applicant is describing to us is a different facility than what I know is in my neighborhood. And what they fear is what I've seen. You see people just walking around and, you know...
We have some of those facilities too. I would welcome more of that facility, the one he's proposing.
Right, yeah. I think this one seems like it's a welcome and it doesn't seem like it's the same thing. So I think, you know, you said, I think that's a perception of what we are looking at, the worst-case scenario and from what the applicant is saying, it's not going to be that. So...
I'm looking at this map and I'm trying to think to myself, if it's inappropriate for here, where in the city do we place them?
Well, to me, this is like a medical hub. You have JFK North just on the other side of 95. You have all sorts of medical, my psychiatrist is down the street.
The night club is not, is not medical, but fast food, other things too, but other than that.
Yeah, I don't see where else. What do we go?
So let's test the water, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to move approval of case number eight forty-eight oh.
We have a motion. Have we a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Motion and second. Sorry, with conditions.
Oh, with, with the two conditions.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Yes.
No.
Motion carries one, two, three, four, five, six to one. All right, thank you. We now move, I think this is it.
This is it?
I think...
This is it for this year?
This is it for this year? Any unfinished business, old business, new business? Any unfinished business, old business, new business?
The dates?
Just like, thank everybody, just like to quit, thank everybody for their service in 2019 and wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, and a Happy New Year to everyone, and see you in 2020.
Thank you. All right, goodbye. Not a bad...